Good morning, everyone. Shall we rise for the pledge, please?
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, gentlemen, we have, um, I'm sorry, minutes that we've got to approve. We held a meeting on Wednesday, October thirteenth, at nine o'clock here in the Tioga Meeting Room. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion to accept them.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna make one more attempt with whomever Rusty may be to see if he can let us know who he is.
Might as well pile him up, Sonny. Then we have a selectman's meeting that was held here Monday, October eighteenth. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Shall move.
All right, and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Rusty, if you could please identify yourself for the meeting minutes. Rusty, if you could please identify yourself for the meeting minutes. Put him back in the waiting room.
All right. Um, then we had a selectman's workshop that was held here on Wednesday, October twentieth. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes? All right, and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh. Oh, okay, all right, very good. I'll let her back in. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's fine. I will let her in.
Okay, and then we also had a workshop held Monday, October twenty-fifth, at five o'clock here at the building.
Shall move. I'll second.
Okay. You guys beat me too much. Thank you. Thank you. Um, and obviously, we'll be by tomorrow to sign manifest abatements, whatever is necessary.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Under new business, we're going, I believe we have signed the MS one signature that was required, correct, Alicia? That's what we signed for you. All right. Okay.
Do you have all three signatures?
Yep.
Okay.
Very good.
Our next item is the draft MOU with the City of Laconia regarding Mountain Lake Village.
Yes. If you can, if you go back in history, back in time, several years, we had been approached back in two thousand thirteen by Phil Bruyard relative to Mountain Lakes Village, which is the subdivision that he was proposing to construct off of Mile Hill Road, which had both properties in Belmont and in Laconia. And we had attempted back in two thousand thirteen to develop an agreement, and we did have an agreement which the Board of Selectmen signed with Phil relative to charges that we were anticipating from the City of Laconia, I believe. And I do have copies of that document for you so that you can see what that was referencing. Sonny, if you would take one and pass those down. So that was the initial, that was the start of the discussions. They went back and forth, they stalled with the city. Probably about a year and a half ago, Phil had contacted me about beginning the discussions once again. And we had retained, or I had retained at the board's approval, Paul Fitzgerald to actually work on this with us because he had worked on the initial one that we had started back in two thousand thirteen. So just recently, we received the draft intermunicipal agreement between the city and the town of Belmont relative to those lots and how they would be accessed, maintained, how the sewer and water charges would be applied, et cetera. I did send it out to the Land use office, who did not have any comments on the document. I did send it to Craig as well, and Craig is here today, and he can certainly provide you with his comments on the document. I did copy Mike on it because it does speak to hydrants and et cetera. I don't know if he has any additional comments on it. I mean, basically, from, I believe from the town's perspective, if we were to go forward with this, any charges associated with the City of Laconia would be the responsibility of Mr. Bruyard. That he would have to, whether we have him set up an escrow account ahead of time to offset these charges, or we're billing him for those charges, the intent would be that there would be no cost to the Belmont taxpayers aside from, there is going to be some maintenance costs, obviously, for the Public Works Department if they're plowing and so forth. But those individuals would be paying taxes to the town of Belmont. So there will be lots in the town of Belmont that would be paying taxes to the town that would cover those services. But those additional services for water and sewer would be billed to Phil.
So he's developing a road?
He has proposed, there are actually two entrances to the development, one being from Laconia and one coming in, or I guess the Belmont piece connects after it's, they're across the line, correct? Yeah. Yeah, so.
So he's doing a, he's doing a horseshoe, let's just say for.
I have a.
No, it's a little bit.
As described in the planning board, it was a, the Laconia side would be more of a workforce housing-type venture with the property a little closer, and the Belmont side would be on streets that would have two to three ica house lots.
Okay. And so he's building it to town road specs?
Yes, that would be the end town.
And who's going to pay for the inspector to inspect the work that's being done on this project when he's in the town of Belmont?
I mean, typically, what the planning board does is they require monies be set aside in an escrow account to cover any inspection services that are done relative to utilities and so forth that are part of the site plan process. I don't know where the planning board is in that piece right now.
It hasn't been brought back up yet.
It hasn't. They've only come forward relative to getting you.
I don't think the funding, I think this is probably two, still two years away.
Okay. Well, I guess, just as a comment, and whether it's, yeah, the selectman's rep for the planning board, is that I would want to see.
We haven't seen any road, we haven't seen that map.
Okay. I would want to.
It started in nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah, it's a long time ago. I would want to see inspection of the water and sewer installation as well as the development of the roads.
Yep.
Well, and primarily, in accordance with this agreement, the, those utility lines are going to be installed in conjunction with the City of Laconia's guidelines, regulations.
So more than likely, Laconia Water Works and Public Works will have an inspector. And I guess the question will be, though, will that inspector, well, they'll inspect the water and sewer, but they won't inspect necessarily the Belmont roads that are being installed, correct?
Not, I would not assume that those inspectors would do that. But that would be something that would be governed by the planning board process when site plan reviews actually.
They gotta start somewhere with this agreement.
Right, yeah.
They're willing to.
All right, so this is just basically the agreement, and then they have to, they're coming back to the planning board. All right.
I would note that on page four, they could spell Belmont correctly.
And I tried to correct all of the various misspellings. There were a couple locations where capacity was misspelled wrong. Where are you, John, on that, that I missed it?
Page four.
Page four. We're on page four, John.
Subparagraph B. Insurance similar to requires municipality shall be provided by or on behalf of the independent contractors for subcontractors cover their operations performed under this agreement. Both Laconia and Belmont shall be responsible.
Is it page four? I don't have that on my page four.
Page six, page six.
Okay.
I was reading page four.
Okay.
Yeah, B, down below. Section five, two.
Oh, okay, yep, got it, thank you. I have not sent this to Phil at this point. My next intent would be to do so and to advise him that the Board of Selectmen have had an opportunity to read it, that there are still some concerns that would need to be addressed through the site plan process, through the planning board, as far as, you know, development of roads. And then any additional comments that I believe Craig may have that he'd like to share with you today.
Craig?
Well, it's just, I mean, we're gonna have to have an additional bit of, as far as the road being its plowing moment, stuff like that. Well, just assuming, we'll just have to assume that.
How many house lots are we looking at in Belmont? I didn't really, oh, can I see that map back again, please, Sonny, I'm sorry? I guess I didn't, um.
Not many compared to Laconia.
Yeah, most of them. You know, you're looking, and now the, now the question becomes, who's gonna plow the roads? Are we gonna?
We have that, we have that clearly identified in the document.
All right, okay.
The town, yeah, the town of Belmont shall plow, treat, and clear the roads of snow along Splendid View Drive. The City of Laconia shall plow, treat, and clear the roads of snow along all of Majestic View and Regal View.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're really only, seven, yeah? It's not a huge, eight, it's not a huge portion.
And that's after fully settled.
Correct.
Yeah, right, right.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a process, it's gonna be.
Yep. But those are gonna be town roads because they are individual lots, that would be my.
The town roads and the utilities, between those town roads, Belmont will be home by the city of Belmont.
Yeah, Belmont's eighteen, Laconia's sixty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's very few.
Um, Mike, comments?
No.
No, you're, you're. Okay, you read it through it, and you feel comfortable with it? All right. So we don't, we don't do any action on it, we're just.
I think at this point, we want to send it along to Phil. And I would like the board to agree that, or to agree with my recommendation that we make it clear to Phil that any associated charges relative to those user fees that are, or fees that are gonna be assessed to the town of Belmont by the City of Laconia would be paid by him as the developer until such time as the, the development is fully built out. And then those fees would become the responsibility of whatever association they create legally at that time. That, you know, the taxpayers of Belmont are not going to take on those, those fees. And there will be fees associated with One of Saki River Basin Program because of the additional capacity that these few houses are going to use. I have to think that those charges will be relatively small considering that we're looking at about eighteen, you know, eighteen houses at basically two hundred and fifty gallons a day times.
Now, I assume, I shouldn't assume, they're gonna all be metered, but they will pay water and sewer to the City of Laconia?
To the City of Laconia.
So we don't have to deal with meters, we don't have to deal with those?
We will not, but there will be a meter, my understanding from the document is there will be a water meter at the Belmont-Laconia line. And that piece will be the piece that would be assessed, there'd be fees assessed to the town. But again, we would bill those to Mr. Bruyard.
Looks like there might have to be two meters.
And that could very likely, I don't know that that.
One meter, yeah.
That plan may.
Change.
May change.
Okay. All right. Well, I would recommend Phil look at it. I mean, he's pretty familiar with everything up on Prescott Hill that we've done, that's been done in the past, so. Any suggestions, guys? Do you feel comfortable with Phil?
No.
You don't?
I don't. And the corner, this corner maps we've got right now, one oh six.
No, no, I mean, no, I don't mean Phil, I don't mean Phil. Yeah, the wrong Phil. I meant.
I'm not happy with the way he followed through.
Well, that's why I meant.
I can't judge that on this, I guess, but I still don't feel that he's done jurisprudence to this community with the mess we've got up there this morning.
Well, and I certainly, I did have Rick Ball. Rick Ball went out and looked at the location yesterday. And he was going to reach out and speak with others today about it. I believe he might even be contacting Rick with the questions he had about it. But some of what he thought he saw yesterday was the road, runoff from the road itself tube as well, so. But he did go out there yesterday.
That he had to make water run uphill.
And I missed, I meant Paul, not Phil. Have Paul Fitzgerald look at it.
Yes.
Right, yeah. I think it's important that we have him.
I think that's absolutely correct.
Yeah. And I agree, any charges should be Phil's responsibility.
Oh, absolutely, totally.
All right. And again, the process through, I mean, we know what we've been experiencing with the corner up here, so we wanna make sure that the proper inspections and whatever, escrow, whatever, has to happen.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, our next order of business is, we received an email from Mr. Trotier, Representative Trotier and O'Hare in regards to the crosswalk where the two young people got hit a couple weeks ago, which happens to be the state road, which the state road runs from the main street of Belmont and one forty up to one oh six. And obviously, Jean, you have further information to give to us in regards to that?
Yes, so, he, both representatives had reached out and had spoken with, or had correspondent, corresponded in writing with William Lambert, who's the traffic engineer administrator for the Bureau regarding the installation of a rectangular rapid-flashing beacon at that location, at that crosswalk location. The DOT basically had responded to them that they do not have the resources to install or maintain those devices. They allow towns and cities to install and maintain them on state highways through a maintenance agreement, but the town would be responsible for any engineering installation and cost of the beacon, or the sign itself. In reviewing the cost of the signs, I was able to find that they range anywhere from about twenty-five hundred to four thousand dollars apiece. And then, obviously, whatever engineering is needed, you know.
Is above and beyond that.
Is above and beyond that. And then we would be responsible also for maintaining them as well. So I did let Representative Trotier, I did make him aware of that, that that was, you know, the cost per unit, but, so, pre-entire attention.
So basically, we pay for everything?
Yeah.
The state's not responsible for its own highway, is what they're telling you.
So when we go to register our cars and we pay state tax, and when we, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we have the intersection on CV Road that the state engineered.
Well, the light changes on room three were not at the, they just happened by the mall, happened at the new owner's expense, that, that are gonna put a gas station in there, they paid for those, the state did.
You're exactly right, and now that I think about it, the lights on one oh six and Plummer Hill.
I helped pay for those, yes, I did.
You're exactly right. So it could be as much as ten, twelve thousand dollars. I mean, by the time you get down to engineering.
I didn't reach out to determine, you know, what the engineering costs were. We were just looking at, you know, what the cost of the lights are. And I believe Craig and I talked about that we would need two, correct, right? One on each side. So you'd be looking at somewhere around between, well, as much as eight thousand dollars for two, two units.
Not including the engineering, not including the installation.
Correct.
Yeah.
You'd ask Craig about the streetlights, 'cause you gave him a poll number a couple weeks.
Yes, and I had reached out to Eversource, and Eversource had come out, and they were going to take care of making whatever repairs needed to be done. The lights that I was actually giving poll numbers on from Ron Mitchell were the ones they were gonna address. Craig said that there was a streetlight at that location. And did you ever get down there after dark to?
It's, I mean, it's not, it's not fully illuminated, but there is some light. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, a blacked-out situation.
I noticed when they put, they really didn't put a real crosswalk in there. It's painted line.
They only put white things.
Yeah, that's what the state does, that's their initial, that's how, that's how they paint.
So it's our responsibility?
If we wanna change it, but they don't recommend we change it. It's just been, they haven't done it for so long, because nothing has been done to that road in so long, that we kinda just painted them the way we painted our crosswalks to maintain them. Because they do it once, and then we, we have the responsibility, after they do them once, to maintain those.
So you're telling me that the light that's there is there, but it's not efficient?
And I don't know if just the light could be upgraded to like an LED light or anything like that, but it's just an old-fashioned type of streetlight, and it's not, it's not meant to, you know, it's not meant to blind people. It's meant, I don't know. And as far as, as far as the sign lighting, lighting they want, there are solar options, but I did speak to the director of Laconia, and they're experimenting with some solar ones. They really haven't made a determination on how, how much maintenance they're gonna take and stuff like that, but the majority of them are hardwired, so to hardwire these things, we would definitely have to get a hold of Eversource, and we would have to have it engineered and do something.
And dig it up, and, yeah, yeah. Okay, so the price just went up some more?
Yes.
What happens if we, I mean, it's a terrible accident.
Are we gonna be liable because we've put that stuff in? I know, I mean, I understand.
We've had, the crosswalk's been there for years. The crossing's been there for years. And I'm not saying, I'm not an action reconstruction, although I wasn't there, didn't see it happen. But if we increase the, above the lumens of the light, the output of the light, would that alone light up that crosswalk better than it is now?
I don't think it's, it certainly would hurt, I don't know if that's an option, to be honest with you, I just, that kinda just.
And then, could you put one maybe across the way on, on, what's the little street right there where the church?
Monument?
Yeah, could you put one across, I mean.
Well, there are church lights right there, and there is a church light, so that does actually help.
Yeah. I guess.
Like I say, if you're gonna put one, ready to stop, then you're gonna, then they're gonna put one on one forty, they're gonna wanna, you know, illuminate one oh six, they're gonna.
I mean, we've had people, we've had people call this summer, wanting streetlights on Jameson Road and want streetlights on wherever.
That many years ago, that people in downtown wanted us to take streetlights out because it was too bright at night and was bothering them sleeping.
I know. I guess, I guess, to me, the hard part is, I think we've all been in situations where we're going through towns or whatever, and that person walks out. I mean, it just happens, well, it's happened to me before, and you, you know, you're paying attention, but yet, sometimes they just come out. I don't know. I guess, I'd like to look into.
Have Craig look into it a little bit different with public service and see if they got an idea.
I mean, it's unfortunate that it just seems as if we all pay the state our share of what we have to pay, and then when we turn around and ask for something, it's, no, we don't have the availability.
It may be a double light option on single pole as well, so.
Could you look at that, let us know?
I just think, what do you think, Mike? Steve, what do you think?
I think it's, you know, there's, there's many, many crosswalks in town, and like Craig said, you know.
If we start one.
That's my opinion, is if you start one, we're gonna end up probably doing more. One forty is gonna be, I mean, Main Street is, the traffic is heavy. With the bridge out of Laconia right now, by the way, it's even heavier, because people are choosing this to choose other routes instead of going. So I don't know, I'm not saying it's not something we should do, but I'm not sure it will stop the next accident. But I, I do recommend that we're there exploring the intersection at one forty, Main Street.
And I know, I mean, we know the engineers have been there.
No, but I recommend if there is going to be a crosswalk, that maybe we suggest that they look into some type of more, more lighting for that situation while we're reconstructing that whole intersection.
I would expect, I would think, that the state will hold some sort of public hearing when they get to that point, but who knows when that point's gonna be? I mean, maybe they won't.
Right, I mean, I know that they had sent notices out to all of the abutting properties so that they'd be aware that they were gonna be in the area working on the engineering and survey work and so forth. I honestly can't recall if the notice said anything about a future meeting because I think the intent, well, actually, they, I would think they would have to if there's any potential.
Impact to any.
Property impacts, exactly.
Taking land.
Correct, yeah. So I would think that they would have to at least, you know, have some type of public process for that.
And we don't know how fast that's gonna come. I mean, how many years were they engineering the intersection of CV and one oh six? Years, right? I mean.
Well, we anticipate the work to be done, I believe it's in twenty-four.
That they're saying?
Yeah.
I guess, at this point, if you can look into that, Craig, maybe a double light or something. I just, I think I kind of agree, if we do one, we could be opening a big expense. All right. Route one forty, Casella, Jean?
Yes, so I've been receiving a number of phone calls from residents in the community who have attempted to take, for example, trailers of what might be construction demolition debris or whatever to the facility, and they've been turned away. So we had reached out, or I had reached out to Casella to find out what was going on, and we were advised that they are no longer taking construction debris from third-party vendors such as Pennard or contractors that are actually, contractors that could be living, may live in Belmont, but maybe working in another community such as Guilford or whatever if they're bringing that debris home, thinking they could deposit it at the facility, they cannot. The purpose in this is because of the capacity at the Bethlehem facility, the Casella facility in Bethlehem, they have run out of what they described to me as airspace for the remainder of this year. They're able to take trash, you know, general trash, and they will take construction and demolition debris from Belmont if it is generated in Belmont. So if you have a contractor working on your home and that renovation is being done in Belmont, they can dispose of that at the facility.
And how do they prove that?
Well, and that was my question to, to them on Friday when I spoke with them, or Thursday. And basically, I said, do you want us to put out notice that they should bring some sort of documentation? He said, no, for now, we'll go with the honor system, that, you know, they need to be certain that it is being generated. I know, generated in Belmont. They will advise their operators who greet the people at the gate. The two individuals that I've actually spoken with were not contractors. They were actually, actually residents who collect debris in a trailer aside their home. They take it over, they are more than happy to pay the scale fee, but they've been doing it for several years, and they were turned away. I reached out and advised them to please, you know, return, go back with your trailer, try again. They should be, you know, accepting that as long as it was generated in Belmont. The capacity for waste disposal in the State of New Hampshire is reaching some pretty scary, you know, capacity limits. They are trying, Casella is trying to get the new facility permitted in Dalton. Um, they are trying, Casella is trying to get the new facility, um, permitted in Dalton, but they have no idea how long that landfill permitting process will take and if they'll even get it through because of all of the, um, you know, concerns that those who live in and around the vicinity of Forest Lake have. Um, you know, Willabrator, they're facing the same issue at the inciner- incinerator at Willabrator in, um, Concord, um, as far as, you know, capacity for that type of, of debris, at least right now. Um, so hopefully, first of the year, their, their airspace capacity will change again, um, and they'll be able to go back to that. I did wanna make certain when I spoke with them that this wasn't having an effect on the outside tonnage that was coming into the facility for which they are paying us a host fee. And I was assured that they're still taking trash from outside vendors. It's more the construction and demolition debris that they're not accepting.
So just because there's just a lot of rehab or whatever going on?
I guess it's just because of it. Yeah, because there's been so much, and I think that it's been that way across the state. There's so much, you know, new construction, renovations and so forth, that, you know, any other community is probably having a similar problem. They have also closed all of their facilities to that same type of, um, debris in the state. The one I specifically know of is Allenstown.
So this isn't, we're not the only?
No, no.
Okay. Great, okay. Any other new business?
I do not.
We'll move on to old bus- business, um, budget follow-ups, Jean.
Yes, so at your meeting, um, last week, um, I understood there were several questions, um, regarding, well, not several, but there were questions regarding the library budget and the wage, um, lines that were being proposed. Um, so, um, as we, we've had this discussion, um, from year to year. Um, the library trustees are very similar in, um, uh, authority as the Board of Selectmen, and they do make recommendations and decisions, um, you know, basically, without, um, taking direction necessarily from the board. Um, over the, the years, they have typically worked with us and, and asked what was the proposed increase for staff, et cetera. And we've always, you know, provided that information, and there have been times when they've, they've agreed and followed it, and there's been other times when they have not. In regards to the assistance position, um, when the young lady that had been previously working for the, the town had left, they determined that they were trying to hire someone with, um, um, a greater skill set to come in and fill the vacant position, and they determined that they needed to offer, um, a, uh, better starting salary for that position. So they had started the new individual at the thirty-six four. So the young lady that actually, um, just recently, um, became part of their staff was started at thirty-six four, and based on my discussions with Eileen, the way this is budgeted, she will remain at that wage through the balance of twenty-one and all of twenty-two. I explained to her that the next opportunity for any potential increases, when she completed her probationary period, um, without having any numbers in the budget, would be April first of twenty-twenty-three. So I have made her aware of that. Um, we spoke last Tuesday, following your meeting on Monday, and I have not, she has not come back to me with any adjustments or suggested adjustments to that number for the twenty-two budget year. I also suggested to her when we meet, when we met, that the library staff somehow be placed or brought onto the town's non-union wage scale so that the grades and steps for their positions were similar to the grades and steps for the positions for other non-union staff. I sent her that grade and step scale and recommended that she look at that for consideration with the trustees in twenty-twenty-two. I don't know if you had any other questions in regard?
I just don't know where and how this got done without the budgetary process entering into it. I mean, they just thought, they just said, here, we're gonna pay you this kind of money, now, now.
Well, what they did, well, what they did is they had gone out and they had done their own, um, review of library staff across the state. That's, that's their.
Well, the way I, round, round numbers, I look at eighteen thousand four hundred dollars in those top three pe- people. Inc, that's what the staff's, it's gonna go up. I mean, if you start with your director, forty-eight nine, and twenty-one was budgeted, this year you want fifty-two five, what they do.
No, no, no. Last year's budget for the director was forty-eight nine.
Yeah.
And this year it's fifty-two, so it's four thousand.
Yeah, and you said fifty-two five.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, okay. The assistant last year was, the budgeted for that position was twenty-six eight, this year is thirty-six four.
Right.
That's a pretty good increase. I'm not saying she's worth it, I'm just saying, before you went and did this, you should've made sure you had the money. And then the assistant.
Now the.
Last year was twenty-six four, that, this is the library part, part.
That's multiple assistants, multiple pe- people.
Same thing, twenty-six thousand with the total budgeted, last year twenty-six four ninety-five. And this year it's thirty-one thousand five hundred and fif- five fifty-four. So you got, I don't know how many assistants they got, but that's a, that's a five thousand dollar increase, but over how many increase? If you break this down, the rest of the town got hosed.
And John, the best I can tell you is the library trustees have the authority.
Take the money, let them take it out of their trust funds.
Well, unfortunately, they can't, and they have the right.
Unfortunately, they did.
Well, they have the right to put forth their budget to the Budget Committee for consideration.
Oh, I understand.
And then it can go forward as recommended or not recommended. So the Board of Selectmen could choose not to recommend what they are proposing, um, and explain to the Budget Committee at the time, but, um, unfortunately, we can't, are we going to recommend a flat budget that we're not going to make any increases? Are you?
No, I didn't say that. I said, what they should've done prior, when they realized that the number two position was maybe underfunded and maybe the number one was, I don't know that, but before they went out and allocated these monies, especially for the number two person who was probably hired with these numbers there.
She was.
That shouldn't have happened. That not should, that's right out, that's right off the scale. That's like, I'll, like, whip you a hamburger. I'll give you a hamburger today, I'll pay you tomorrow.
And what?
They, she, this lady, and I'd say she, I assume it's a lady, or it's a gentleman, whatever.
Person.
The person that they gave this money to without it being budgetized as we do in this town.
So what they did was, they took a look at what they had expended to date for the library assistance position, and they determined that there was enough funds in that budget line to cover the increase in salary or the change in salary for this one position.
This year, but not for further.
For this year. Well, but that, that's no different than any of your other budgets in the community. Right now, we've put a budget number in with an anticipated increase for March. Now, it's very possible if we were to go to a, to a, um, default budget, that they would remain at their prior year's wage, that, well, the assistant would be increased to thirty-six.
What we've done with our hourly people and non-union people in this town for many, the last five to six, eight years, we didn't do this step and bump thing. We did two percent.
Oh, I understand, John, but the library tr- the library has never followed that process.
I understand that also, but the rest of the employees in the town, which are a far larger group than these people, and I'm not saying they're not worth it, I'm just saying this is.
I, I, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, you got a fifty thousand dollar increase in this budget.
So let me ask you something, if, if.
It's twenty-five, actually, John.
If we didn't support this because we don't feel.
One of them's eighty-four hundred, so, eighty-four and five is thirteen, four is.
Their prior year was one seventy-five, and this year's two oh four.
Okay, so if we didn't support this budget because we don't feel that the increases that they're recommending, uh, fall in line with the rest of the non-union or the rest of the hourly people, then it goes on to, so we, I'm, I'm asking this. Then it goes on to the Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee feels the same. What happens? Nothing. They're still, they're still gonna put the, the two oh fours gonna, because you're saying they're an entity in themselves.
So if the Board of Selectmen were to change those two salary lines to, for example, the director, and you increased it by two percent, and the full-time assistance budget from twenty-one by two percent, it would have an effect on the FICR and Medicare amounts as well. Those adjustments would be made, so your budget would therefore be somewhere in the vicinity of, mm, I don't know, one ninety probably would be the Selectmen's budget. Um, the requested, the Selectmen's recommendation would go forth to the Budget Committee. The library trustees and the librarian would go before the Budget Committee and have that conversation, where the Budget Committee would fall on that. Um, you know, in the past, they have supported those increases and haven't, haven't not recommended the increases by the trustees. It is the Budget Committee's budget that goes to the voters.
Okay.
Um, now, if the library trustees still chose to honor those wages, they could, as long as they did not overexpend the bottom line of their budget.
So they would have to take their money from somewhere else.
So they would have to find other, other areas within their budget. Now, if you notice, they increased their general expense line from forty-nine six to fifty-five six. So there's an increase there of six thousand. They've identified on the bottom what those additional, um, expenses are, um, and where they were going to be increasing, um, uh, those amounts, um, from the forty-nine to the fifty-five. But they could conceivably, um, I mean, could they still fund those, those wages? They absolutely could still do that under their authority as trustees of the library.
And why do they need us?
Well.
Why, why?
Why, why we do this?
Because, well, unfortunately, it's a process. Um, and, and again, I mean, it's, it, it has been this way with libraries across the state of New Hampshire forever. Um, the library trustees are, you know, a duly elected board with the same authorities as a Board of Selectmen. They hire and fire for the library. The Board of Selectmen don't have any part in that process. Um, they establish their budgets in the past, again. You've, um, at one point, you had a library trustee that was on the Board of Selectmen, because you can serve on both boards. And, um, you know, that individual did assist in keeping them in line.
Oh, Mr. Paulman was very good at getting money put into the, uh, fund for your.
But they cannot, they cannot use their, their capital budget brandiness.
I, I understand. He was very good every year by making sure that that was done.
I guess, I guess. Where, I mean, it's really hard for, um, let's just say, the, the full-time assistant, whoever, whoever that person is, to get an increase as to what, all right. And then us not give our own, I guess, because they're separate.
But, but I think what we need to be, we need to understand is that the individual that filled that position is new.
That was probably the wrong person to use. I should've, I should've used one of the other ones, but.
She is not, right, she is not the individual that was on, and the part-time assistants are only getting, they typically only get a, a, you know, it could be a, a two or three percent increase. It's, they're being paid hourly at some, you know, I don't, I don't know what the hourly rate is.
So probably the, is the full-time assistant a, um, an hourly or a?
No, she is a salary position.
Salary person, as well as a director.
Correct.
Jean, what's two, what's two and a half percent of fifty-two five?
Thirteen hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents? So, let me understand you.
You want, you want two and a half percent?
Currently, the town's step scale is two percent between steps. So are you recommending that we take her two thousand twenty-one, or twenty-twenty-one salary amount, which was the forty-eight nine twenty-eight, times two percent and make that the Selectmen's recommended budget?
That's what I wanna with a number.
Yeah, yeah, it was just.
Okay, so, hold on. Forty-nine, nine oh six, fifty-six. And I cannot tell you what the total adjustment would be to the budget, because it's in a different worksheet as far as the benefit is correct.
But that would be a slight change.
Now, I will tell you, um, you can recommend, again, you can recommend an amount, a, a different amount for the full-time assistant for the budget. But she is currently at the thirty-six four salary, and they, they, that will not change for twenty-two. So they would have to, you know.
And when you're looking at the part-time assistants, I don't know.
Those are individuals, they have several, they're several.
I don't think that line's that bad for the amount of people that.
They have at least, I think they have at least four part-time people anyways, and they're in and out.
Bad for that line.
Yep.
I'd recommend we change the, the directors to two and a half percent.
Are you, uh, two and a half or two?
Two percent.
Two percent, whatever your scale.
Okay.
Whatever your scale would do, from twenty-one to twenty-two. And I, I guess we got no choice but line two, and line three, I'd leave that where it is. And then very heartily suggest that we use a system.
And I, and I did strongly suggest that they, um, convert their people to.
That should be noted at the budget hearing that they, it's time to convert to, and get in line with the rest of the town.
Okay, all right.
Um, do you wanna take a vote on that? Do you agree with that, Sunny?
I agree with that, yep, absolutely.
All right, so you're gonna second, obviously, John's change, you'll second it, all right? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
So that will decrease it.
A little.
Yeah, a little, all right.
And the other budget that, um, you had discussed, but you didn't vote on was general assistance.
That we didn't vote on, that's right. Yep, yep. And would you just need a, um, um, a motion for that?
I would just need a motion for that so that I can finalize, um, those worksheets and get them ready to go into the budget book.
Okay. I don't have that figure in front of me, but I'll make the motion that we, um, I do have it maybe. No, I don't have it.
It should've, there wasn't a copy in your packet?
Um, oh, was it? I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I didn't go that far back. Got it.
Sunny, you had some issues when we discussed this earlier.
The general assistance?
Yes. And this is the same budget?
He said that, um, you had some, you had some issues with the general assistance.
When Donna came before us.
The what?
With the general assistance budget, you had some issues with that?
When, when Donna came before us, you seemed to have some issues of the, is this, is this budget been changed from that day?
No, I'll retract that, that statement, I guess. I, I'm a little slap in the face for that, so I'll.
You gotta stop.
So I'll just rescind it.
So basically, that budget is a hundred and eighty-nine, one twelve, forty-four, correct?
Which is actually less money than it was last year, in twenty-one.
Right.
I'll make, I'll, I'll make the motion to accept it as, as.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, um, capital outlay and reserves?
Yes, so you have in front of you the proposed capital budget. Um, now, the budget itself, or the, the, um, planning board did, um, hold their public hearing, um, relative to the CIP or the Capital Improvements Program at their last meeting. Um, as you know, um, typically, um, those items that are submitted, um, through the, the CIP don't always make it all the way through into the, um, the budget as, um, you know, recommended by the Board of Selectmen. You had previously discussed with the fire chief, the command vehicle, um, the F-150, when he was in to discuss his budget, and you had put forth that recommendation for the seventy-four thousand five sixty-one, which, um, has offsetting revenue equal to that, which comes from the special revenue fund for the ambulance. Um, you had recommended that the repairs that were necessary to the station, um, for the roof and so forth, come from the municipal facilities' capital reserve, so there were no, um, additional monies to be appropriated for that.
And we don't know what that figure is, right? Mike, you haven't gotten an estimate, you have, okay, all right, just, okay.
What line does that show up on, Jean?
Um, well. Um, well, there's no amount now in there, I had removed it.
Eighty-five thousand, how much was the roof?
It was around fifteen thousand was the, the number that went through to CIP.
Yeah, 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 I, I knew there was a number, okay, thank you.
And are you vinyling the doors, around the doors and windows and stuff, or are you just painting? Yeah, I thought, I think, uh, we talked about that, okay, sorry, Jean.
Nope, that's okay. Um, we are proposing, um, twenty thousand again into the environmental contingency line. You'll note that only forty-three hundred shows expended as of this date, however, that line item has been fully expended. Um, a portion of the, um, police building or police station, the old police station, came from that. And we also have some other, um, work that's being done at the fire station that will take place in the next couple of weeks, um, relative to the in-ground tank, um, that will also need to come from those funds. So that twenty thousand is being recommended again for this coming year because we never know what type of environmental issues are going to, um, come up and bite us. So, um, we're recommending the twenty thousand again for this coming year. And then below that are your capital reserve requet, capital reserve, um, requests, um, the accrued liability account, we are increasing this year. We have a number of individuals who are eligible for retirement. We are currently, um, reaching the point in that fund where we do not have sufficient funds to cover, um, that liability. We may need to subsequently adjust this prior to, um, the actual discussion by the budget committee and, and the deliberative session. This is funded from unexpended fund balance. We do not, um, raise this amount from taxation. We take it from what is left over at year's end and may have not been expended in, um, our other bu, other budgets.
So these are monies that don't necessarily go back into the general fund?
So what happens is, um, every year, we budget X.
Right.
We budget an anticipated revenue amount of X. Um, at, at year-end, they determine what hasn't been expended fully in everyone's budget, and that becomes unexpended fund balance. Um, and that's how that works. Um, and, and revenues, anything that comes in that is in excess of what was anticipated, also goes into unexpended fund balance. Our current unfunded or unexpended fund balance currently is two million, twenty-three thousand and change. We increased our unfunded, unexpended fund balance this past year from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one by approximately five hundred and forty thousand dollars. We were at one, one million four hundred and fifty-three thousand last year, so it has increased. So we would, we would fund this line item as we have for, since its inception, from that unexpended fund balance.
Okay.
Um, heavy equipment capital reserve, uh, sixty thousand. Um, non-capital information, or cap, uh, information technology, recommending that we put ten thousand into that account this year. Um, twenty-five thousand into bridge repair. Um, and I can give you each of the, the balances in each of these accounts if you'd like them, um, I do have those available. The cemetery had requested sixty, and I know there was some discussion at the, at the CIP meeting in regards to that, and they had indicated that if you were not going to support that amount going forward, they would respectfully request that you put ten thousand into capital reserve in lieu of that, that amount.
I'd like to address that in closed session.
Okay.
That amount of sixty thousand and the amount of ten thousand.
Okay, all right. Um, you had asked me to increase the municipal facilities capital reserve request to three hundred thousand. Um, the library has requested twenty-five, again, these were all submitted through the CIP. Um, seven hundred and fifty thousand is again requested for the, um, highway reconstruction account. Um, we need to begin, um, building up our assessing and property taxation line.
Now, this is, um, the second year? It's every five years, correct?
Every five years, and we will need to do another revale in twenty-twenty-four. So we need to start building those funds up. So we really have to urge, um, you know, the voters to support that because what happens is we're mandated by law to, to do that evaluate, or do that revale every five years. Um, a hundred thousand into the water system capital reserve, which is funded through water user fees. Um, twenty-five hundred into the dry hydrant and cistern account, which that's been an annual appropriation. And then the five thousand going into the Dura Mountain Road capital reserve is actually coming from fund balance as well. We receive a check in the spring, um, from the contractor who now owns the property at the end of Dura Mountain Road, the gravel pit owner. They write us a check for five thousand dollars, it's meant to go into that capital reserve fund. So it is then, um, moved from unexpended fund balance, um, at year's end into that account. Um, we are, we have completed the, um, traffic counts for, um, Dura Mountain Road. We had someone out there two weeks in a row doing traffic counts for us. That information has been sent to our engineer. Um, Craig has, um, had the work completed to do, um, some, some shim work out there, so that has been done. Um, so we're waiting for that final report that we can then take back to the gravel pit owner and try and work out some type of an arrangement to increase, um, the amount of monies that we're receiving for those repairs.
Okay, all right.
Um, I can tell you if you would like to know what those capital reserve balances are. Um, if you have any one in particular that you would like to know what the balance is.
Uh, yes, yes.
Yeah, you let them, they're just, yeah, yeah, you're off as soon as they're, absolutely, for sure.
We won't forget you, Mike.
No, no, they're just.
Um, one question though. If, um, again, waiting for this road assessment on Dura Mountain and the information to come back, um, and if we come to a different agreement, we can still do that partway through the year, we don't have to?
It would have nothing to do with the monies that you put into capital because this, this capital reserve amount that you're funding is the prior year's amount.
Okay, all right.
And we have to do that each year, so it's always going to be a year behind, yes.
So whatever agreement we make is?
Is, would be for, we would make that agreement hopefully in twenty-twenty-two. And whether or not they just decide to pay outright, it may not be that they give you the monies to put into reserve. They may just agree to participate in the cost of some repairs. And they can certainly do that, depending on what type of, um, arrangement we can, um, work out with them.
If we even can.
If we can, yeah, exactly.
All right, and that's determined by the engineers?
Based on, on the discussion of what they anticipated costs were going to be for repairs. I mean, certainly, the information that Craig had provided to you when we started talking about what little bit of repair he wanted to do, was much more substantial than what we were able to do, so.
And sooner than what we thought we were gonna have to do it also.
Yeah.
Can you explain that, uh, residential accrued, went from thirty thousand to seventy-five?
Yes, so, so what that account funds is when an individual meets the eligibility standards for retirement and they retire, um, there is, um, a liability to the town to pay them out for vaca, vaca, unused vacation. Um, if they have been here more than ten years, they're paid out for two hundred and twenty-five hours of sick time. If they've been here in excess of fifteen years or twenty years, there's an amount that is paid out to them as well as a, um, as a benefit for retirement. And those monies, we s, we established this capital reserve fund several years ago so that those large hits weren't coming out of the individual budgets. So for example, someone retiring that had been with the community for, a perfect example might have been Candy for thirty years. If we had hit their budget with the accrued liability, it would have wiped out their budget and there wouldn't have been any monies to, you know, to carry forward for, for the salary line. So that's why we established this fund, but we have always funded it from unexpended fund balance. So it is not factored into the tax rate. Um, because we take monies that were previously not expended the, the year before and use those monies to fund that account. So once town meeting happens in March, we actually make that deposit within twenty days of town meeting into that fund, using those unexpended fund balances.
And the reason we're adding more into it, Sunny, is because we have more people that are, uh, that are gonna retire and then we have to, um, yeah, yeah. What is that balance, Jean?
Well, right now, as of October twenty-ninth, I had seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah, I guess we gotta be putting some money into it.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, all right.
Okay, nice explanation.
All right.
Any others that you want to know current balances on?
Just line up, closed session.
All right, um, Mike, I know you wanted to, um, have a chance to, um, address us this morning.
So in light of some information I was unable to give you before, and if you can hear me better.
Yep.
With the request for the vote, I know that the decision was unknown, it's void. I just wanna make sure that the information is fully, uh, given to you. Uh, there will be no vote back in that lake next year. The city of Laconia has taken that vote out of service and there will be no vote in that lake next year.
Now, this is which lake, Windusquon?
Windusquon, correct.
Thank you.
Uh, we've always had a vote on a lake, when the Swam Fire was there, when we acquired, when the Swam Fire required the votes and everything to go along with that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, my concerns are, obviously, we have two hundred and forty properties on that lake, we have a beach, we have a marina, we have a lot of stuff that, uh, you know, millions of dollars of property. Um, we will no longer be able to access from that side, as well as six houses on an island. Um, so I guess I'm just giving the information under consideration that this is something that we have to worry about. It is my job to let you know that it's not there and we need to protect that.
So why did Laconia do away with their vote?
They didn't, what happened was, Sunny, the vote came out of the lot this year, and when they brought it to get a check, there was so much work that needs to be done to it, that it wasn't worth the investment to invest back in that boat to put it into service.
So they don't have a boat at all?
That boat, they do not have at all, that boat no longer exists.
They, but they don't have any boat?
They do in the Windus, Windus, South, not in Windusquon. There is no fireboat, other than Belmont Fire's boats, in that lake.
Well, that's great, so we, why don't we put a deal together with Tilton and Sammerton? Uh, if we're gonna put this thing at Windusquon and see if they wanna share in this money? Because Sammerton's got an awful lot of shorefront, Laconia's got a lot of shorefront. And Erickson made the point back years ago, when he was the chief of boat departments, that his boat in Laconia could be to, to Windusquon and in the water.
Faster than we could get hours, yeah, I remember that, unless of course it was there.
Cause of that, the boat that was there when it was Windusquon Fire Department, it was a pontoon boat that had a top speed of about six knots and a pump on it, that, the thing sank more than it floated.
Uh, so what's, the one that came out is almost the same situation?
I understand that, Mike, what I'm saying is, we're gonna provide service.
So, um, my comment to you, John, really quick is, my job isn't, I have no problem getting, looking for funding from other places. My job is not to come to you saying, I'm gonna purchase or look at purchasing a boat for the taxpayers of Belmont, Belmont, for all the communities. That's not how I look at, that's not how I approach this. Because if I said to you, hey, John, we're looking to buy a boat, so we can do mutual aid for everybody else's community, you'd be like, why would we pay for everybody else's?
Well, my, my comment would be, and my comment goes back to, if you feel there's that much of a need, the police, the fire chiefs of those towns that have the border, now, Laconia, you say they don't have a boat. And all of us should participate in a boat that's housed somewhere and participate in the cost and the overall maintenance and the duty time for that boat.
And I think.
We all want a lake, now, we do have, we have marine safety patrol, but they're not gonna put out a fire on an island. And I realize they only have one, maybe two, on the, on the lake at a time.
Well, during the CIP, one of the members woke up and said, he had a call for help.
Yep.
He called marine patrol, marine patrol said to call for inspection.
Did he?
So we ended up going out and taking care of it.
Didn't, didn't in years past, when we had this discussion, just to refresh my memory, that, um, Windusquon Marine, all right? Because they do rentals, but I mean, I understand, it's not equipped, it's not equipped, but it, but they do.
Windusquon Marine has been gracious to allow us to use a boat in an emergency situation.
Sure.
Concerns are, remember.
Yeah, you don't have.
The liability that we damage that boat, it's not ours and we would never have.
And you don't have the right stuff on it.
Correct, we're going out there with what we have. We're looking to, obviously, this boat have extinguishment ability, we have, we have radars on, radar, we'd be able to have some downings. We got a couple of downings this year, we had, we had, we had an instance where a boat was left with everything in it, cell phones, pocketbooks, everything, so we didn't know these people were. We're out searching this lake and trying, it was at night, and the long of the short story is, they ended up getting on somebody else's boat, leaving everything in there, and by the way, they showed up on a, a Foley boat, it was kind of the weirdest thing I've ever seen. Uh, but they did.
You mean one of those tiki boat things?
Well, I was thinking that was kinda, kinda strange, it was powered by a s, uh, solar, so, and then when night, obviously, they weren't. Um, so we were searching for these people, and if they were under, we would know where we were gonna find them. And, uh, fortunately, they weren't, they actually decided to, um, you know, protect it, some other activities, and we found out, but it was quite an intense search in the past.
Sure, sure.
So, I don't have an issue with what you're saying, John, my job is letting you know that this is what is going to happen. And the problem also is, the taxpayers, this will encourage their expenses, remember, when we can't access stuff, such companies like, whoa, you know, and will end up returning cost to them.
But they'd swallow fifty to a hun, fifty to seventy-five thousand in occurrence with the other towns around for a centrally located boat, which we have the dock, which Sammerton can get to, which Tilton can get to, and you can get to, and Laconia can get to. That, we, we also have, I assume the word is still used, mutual aid.
Correct.
So the call goes up and we've got somebody that thinks drowned up in the north side of Leighton Avenue, which is north of the state school. Yeah, they gotta come down and get it, but they don't have to trailer it, it's all in the water. And reasonable amount of equipment should be on it, and the, and the share of costing, it should be maintained, is what I'm saying. The, I don't doubt that the lake needs a boat. I don't know that we can afford the boat for our section of lake. We got the shorefront from Laconia line to the bridge, we got the bridge south. And then we got Silver Lake. Guess we, I can't put a, that boat won't probably fit on Silver Lake.
No.
So.
Won't go into the MO.
I didn't think so, but just checking, you know, the, the, pigs lie, I mean.
And to that, John, your, your statement is, remember, in that same statement, we're sitting there going, we're gonna sit there and say, then this, then another departments can just jump into one of my fire trucks and drive away with it. And that liability, again, we're training people to be able to use the equipment. So we have people that can take this out, because you're talking about a lot of change, they will go along with this. You're saying you're, the, 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 the support has no problem with having somebody else just jump on this boat.
Well, what I'm saying, mutual aid had owned the boat, we would pay mutual aid, we would all share in this boat, we share electronics.
What do you mean mutual aid?
I don't think mutual aid owns, owns the equipment.
Maybe, maybe mutual firegate owners.
Well, then, why don't you create one? I mean, what I'm saying here is, all the towns have the same need. This discussion should go through the towns, through all you police, fire chiefs, and go through it. I'm not saying that everybody, does Sammerton need a boat, does Tilton need a boat?
Well, that was gonna be my next question, I mean, um, and again, we don't know.
So we share this thing.
Is the Sammerton fire chief sitting in front of the Sammerton Board of Selectmen asking for a boat?
I do not know.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, it's just kinda.
I think you guys.
Well, I, I'll tell you why I think it's highly unpopular, is because nobody has a place to put this boat, okay? It's gonna go into town of Belmont, the town of Belmont has a piece of property that the state has allowed us to have a right of way to, that allows us to this boat. When, as I described it before, when the river is closed, we can't get to there with a, a boat. What happened is, uh, there was an incident, a mutual aid union, Sammerton, had to get a boat in the lake. They did not realize that they could not put that boat in that, that landing. So they, it caused a little bit of confusion in that, uh, landing to them to get in would be in the city of Laconia, off of, um, I don't know, something basically, behind more cartels where the, uh, treatment places.
Oh, really, oh.
That's where the only place is, and obviously, it's.
That, or behind where you go.
And it's time consuming because, busy day, a lot of, I don't know if you've been there, when people at five o'clock at night, they're trying to get boats in and out of there, but it's pretty tough to get them out of there.
Crazy, yeah.
Fortunate part in, in, in is that you have some time during the day. Otters are like, like a lot of, like motorcycles, that if somebody's hurt, usually, because they are right around each other, they go and help each other. The problems with running some nights, there's nobody on the lake, or, or somebody will be riding around with the lights on, they get clobbered or something like that happens. And unlike, unlike land, property lines or, or, or town lines are harder to understand. Somebody calls the lake, says, blah, blah, blah's happened. I'm on one. Well, multiple times here again, told him for this, because of the fact, nobody really knows where the object.
They don't know where the line is.
That's just because.
Yeah.
People aren't calling us and what's going on.
Sure, sure.
But I just wanted to make sure I, that I reiterate this, and I respect what you have to say, John. I just want to know that, that as of two thousand twenty-two, there will be no boat on that.
So, and the monies for the boat, w- is that coming out of the ambulance fund or is that coming?
Correct.
That would be.
It was proposed to come out that way.
See, I'd rather, I'd rather see it take, instead of that money, pull it out of that ambulance fund. And as I said before, go up to the college. See if they have some fire academy students that wish to go but don't have the money, they have the abilities, but don't have the money to pay the tuition. So why can't we put in a program like the police department does and hire a young firefighter that would go to that school, pending his graduation and even track his grades and admin, work in our station, and then have a three-year upon graduation, not, not owe any money for the education that he had to pay tuition for. Get paid a little and live in your building and then have a two or three-year agreement to remain as a firefighter in Belmont. And start growing our own. Why couldn't we use some of that money? I think it's more applicable to us, especially E M T wise, to start something like that than it is to spend the money with a boat.
Okay?
I don't know if, I know this.
Problem is with that is the fire academy in the state of New Hampshire isn't set up for that right now. The college teaches them and sends them to the fire academy to get.
But someone has to pay tuition to the college, am I right?
Correct. So let me ask you this. Are you okay with hiring a police officer and not having them be able to work at all for two years?
Well, yes.
Cause two years is for college.
I, 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 I understand that, Michael. But you had people that went to that college that lived in that building that you'd run.
Correct.
Okay? What did they do when they lived there? Nothing?
No, they went on college to learn to do the job.
Okay, so if we afford someone the ability to go to school, get good grades, that two years of training, and we house them and take care of them, and then they have a service agreement with us for additional two or three years.
A contract?
A contract, like a policeman does. We hire a policeman. We got lucky with one this year. A man came to work from the marine safety patrol to the police force. And he had some credentials because of being in that service.
But he wasn't a certified policeman.
It wasn't certified. So he has to go down there, and I realize it's sixteen, eighteen weeks to down to school, then there's another twelve weeks to go to another school. And I realize it's not two years. But when you come right down to two full years, that school isn't open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week either. That school has, they have sessions and they don't, and there's hours they're off. This person can lend mechanical support, i.e., I hate to say it because I've, I've heard the bad things that they get stuck doing all the dirty work at the station. I don't know that, only rumors. But they would be around and have a camaraderie with the people and wanna educate and be educated. So you're all trying to hire a guy. I think we can do that cheaper than we can go and hire a guy that's got the two years of schooling in, because you're still gonna bring him in and still further train him, just like you would one of these, cause it's an ongoing training. And I think the investment is better spent there. How many people drowned last year in Windisquam? How many boat accidents were there?
I honestly don't know.
With, with personal injury in Belmont side of it. That's what I'm saying, the investment. Public safety, I understand a hundred percent. And I would add, you guys, you do a great job. But I'm looking for, when you came to us for firemen, and you said it yourself, we gotta go steal, we gotta give them a boat, we're gonna have to get in that bonus program. Well, the guys we have are very good guys. So I think, when, if this system would start to work, and I think I can get somebody in that college here to accept this, say, this is a student, he's coming out of high school. He's hung around his fire department in Land Ave, New Hampshire, a one-truck fire department, right?
Yep.
His father's a former deputy fire chief, or maybe the fire chief. He wants to go to school down here. They're working people. They can't afford to send him down here. They can't afford to pay the rent. So there's a program. If you qualify for it, and you get two or three of your people on your board to set and, and with the aid of the school, and say, look, how much is it gonna cost to pay the tuition for this young man? And you'll know in sixty, ninety days if he's gonna do the work and stuff and come along, and he'll stay at your facility and bring him into it.
So you're saying, so we do this. We have an opening for this to happen, for this person to be done when they're done to be employed.
Well, didn't we just a year or so ago hire a person that had to have an agreement, cause we hired them with some government funds, that came to, came to work with you people, they had to be on, you came with a proposal with us for two or three firemen, that had, there was a government program that if we hired them, that they would stay and we, they'd get paid for X amount of dollars. And at the end of it, you could either keep them or they moved on.
So we went for the safer grant.
Yeah.
The safer grant says if we hire these people for a three-year period of time, at the end of the three-year period, the time the town of Belmont then acquires, acquires them or chooses to discontinue their employment. So that's what we came to with this year. Those keep changing. There were some years it was, uh, accelerating.
Okay, I understand they change.
So what I'm trying to say, John, is if we don't have a position for this person, we can't contract this person, because we can't sit there and say, at the end of this.
You're not contracting them with the union. You're making a deal with this person. You're not violating the union, just like you would a student. If a kid came here right now and said, I wanna be a volunteer fire department, can I live in this department with you and work with you from the college? He's already enrolled.
No, but I think what Mike is saying, if I understand, correct me, what Mike is saying is that, so this young man or late, whatever, this person, person comes to him, wants to go to college, alright? And, and is, and works, we, we're gonna pay the tuition. And when that person is done, graduates from college, now we have a contract with that person for him to work for us for three years. What Mike is saying, this person graduates, now we have a contract with him, but we don't, he doesn't have an opening in his department for that person. Am I, is that?
So now, now you're making a position.
You're adding a position.
Without your approval.
Right.
You're contracting with somebody who said.
Okay, now let's, let's look ahead a little bit. Under our line number oh-one, four-nine-one-five-zero-zero-one, accrued, okay, capital accrued. That was our investment we just talked about. And what we have to pay people for their accrued time that they have when they leave us. They retire, fifteen, twenty years. What's the average age of your staff right now? And how many of them do you see retiring, as you said the other night to us, including yourself, in the next three to five years?
We have four people that can go, well, we have three, it's, we have one lot that we're coming up. In the age of my staff, after that drops dramatically, probably late twenties, early thirties.
That's my point. We might have a few years that they'd last and stay on. We probably should have been doing this five years ago. But I think we have to grow our own. I think we, I think with the people in your house that can help train them, I think we have to grow our own. And I, I just can't.
So we kinda bounce around on the different subjects.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I was gonna actually talk about this in a second, so. Well, if, if it's okay with the board, I would like to finish up C I P and then this.
Yeah.
I think we're moving kind of.
Yeah, we're going all over the place. And then I have one question for you also. Go ahead. You finish your.
That's what the boat, the reason for the boat.
Yes.
Also, the utility, remember that, utility is gonna start costing us more than it, than it's, than its total cost. Uh, it's, it's, it's getting tired. It's, you know, we've already discussed this, you know, it's vehicle, it's plow, it's the whole. So those are the considerations I'd like to put in.
But, um, John, did you up and look at those vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So you and John have discussed.
No, I, no, we haven't. I just went and looked.
Okay, you went and looked.
Figure that was a board discussion.
Okay, so what, what, what we agreed was to, to do the command vehicle.
Yep.
F one fifty, correct?
Yep.
Now, what Mike is proposing is a replacement of utili- the utility vehicle. You, I'm, I'm.
Vehicle.
Okay.
So what happens with the vehicle, if you, the command vehicle will become Ms. Black's vehicle?
This is a cheap Black's car.
Yes. And that vehicle will go where? Though she's personally using.
That vehicle will go back in the line like it was supposed to, and be used as a forestry like it's, and the purpose and was purchased for.
Okay, why couldn't we put a plow on that?
We could put a plow on it.
That'll bend it.
The utility though is a pickup and a plow and everything. That's a vehicle that picks up all the hose when we're done the jobs. It does all the work when we're done with this. That's why we do this. In the summer, it has a, it's a secondary forestry for, because we have the ability to go after the fire truck. Can't bring a fire truck out in the middle of a field. We use full-size vehicles to do this. We've always had two forestries, one whom was a nineteen-way bodily when you were born, John, vehicle. And we had to bring that back to the state because it was his time. The, the vehicles were gonna cost, we couldn't inspect it anymore. That's where the hell we ended up with the newest forestry. And then that, that was a replacement for a replacement. When I fired two Chief Erickson getting there, we had two command cars, a forestry and a utility. And that's how we were running. And that's how I feel that is the best operation for the department.
Well, I, I don't agree with you. That's all. That's, I just, I just don't agree with you. I think we can, we ended up with a, with a fire department command vehicle and used it for four more years in the highway position that a highway director drove with very little repairs. And when they overcame it, we got rid of it, or have, are getting rid of it. I'm, I'm not. This vehicle, just to support a plow, I don't think has to be a brand-new vehicle, number one. And number two, I think the utility body on it would be just as well off as a pickup body. And the frame on the vehicle looks good to me. Yes, the rocker panels were done, but not kinda by what I would call a real handy guy. I did not start it up a run, but I've seen it running at, at the store sometimes. It doesn't seem to smoke, it doesn't clatter. I, I think it could go another year or so on that vehicle. Even if it meant pulling the utility body off and put it on another truck later on, if you bought aluminum utility body like you, like you have on your forestry truck. I think you'd accomplish the same thing with a lot less spending. I, I, I know you have the money. I just wanna stay ultra-conservative with it, because you never know what's gonna crop up for me. And I think you'd go another year on it and I'd entertain it next year. And that's my thought.
Like you said, John, I respectfully disagree with you. I feel that vehicle has gotten to its point, but that's.
But you also, you also, your, your department gave up a vehicle that lasted another four years, used every day, twenty-four hours a day in this town.
Yes, my name, I'm a taxpayer here in Belmont. I live up in Oak Drive. Ms. Moody, you and I have spoken numerous times on the phone. My name's Jason Griffin.
And, and what, what, your name?
Jason Griffin. You made a comment at the previous meeting in your rebuttal to whatever conversations have been had about all these gentlemen need to come out and support their fire chief. As a taxpayer, I think we need to do the same, okay? Two drownings, there's gonna be no boat on the lake next year. If that's your kid, what do you want? You know what I mean? Your house on the island, it's still their job to protect that property. We're talking about twenty thousand dollars in signage on the main road, and where's it gonna stop? Two kids got hit. Does it matter where it stops? Make the community a safer place. He's up here trying to advocate for that. Just because he had a vehicle, went out of service and went to another town department and lasted four more years? Yeah, they're not doing the same thing they're doing with it. They're going sixty, seventy miles an hour down the road to a loved one that needs help. It's not the same as driving around town at the speed limit, going and doing inspections. It's not the same thing. And I think that that's what's lost track of here. A pontoon boat is not realistic.
That's what they had.
And it didn't work, John. That's.
I understand that, but they had it for many years and it keeps going on. We had a boat in the lake. They weren't using it. The thing sucked more than it flowed.
So what's their backup plan right now if they have a water rescue on the lake?
I don't know.
Right, but my problem is, is that as a tax, no, they're, they're, they're gone. If they're not on the lake, they might have to come from Guilford or come in off duty. You're making a decision based on a safety need for this community without understanding what is in the backup plan.
But I'm also listening to a fire chief that just said to me, we needed two more firemen because he doesn't have enough now. But then he's asking for a boat, that we ain't got enough people to man the station we currently have. So who's gonna man the boat?
I also think that you should be supporting that.
It's the, the chicken and the egg here. And financially, we have to be somewhere in there friskly responsible for the whole town. And yes, safety is very much my concern, very much. So, and if you don't think so, when he mentioned that a lot of times the highway department didn't get there to plow fast enough, I spoke to that man that same day that's in charge of plowing that. The drownings happened. I'm not, you telling me that they could have been prevented if I had a boat down in Windisquam? The call came in, they go down to Windisquam, get the boat, and they drowned just south of Mohawk Island over on Sandy Beach.
No, what I'm saying is, is that having a boat in the lake ready to go is going to allow the response to be more appropriate in time. That's what I'm saying. Because the only other option that this fire department has, which I really wish this board would understand prior to making a decision on this, is how big is the boat, your station chief?
Thirteen feet.
Wow, what size motor is on it?
Uh, eighteen horse.
Eighteen horse. So now they have to take it down there, pray to God that there's a place to launch it in a timely manner. And then however long it's gonna take to get across. You mentioned the old boat going six knots. That was not gonna go much faster. Let alone try to drag a body out of the lake into that boat. You're probably gonna capsize it.
But when you weren't present when they wanted that boat, cause we've got other small ponds like Sergeant Lake, other small lakes here that they respond to, and they need a boat to get in, get to those. You can't take a twenty-four foot boat.
We just purchased that not too long ago.
The fire chief is now providing you with outweighs the need for that boat to be adequate. That's why he's asking for a bigger boat. And I'm standing here as a taxpayer wishing that you guys would support it a little bit more. And I don't know what his next topic is, but as far as the other two firefighters, you and I had this discussion. You can't have a college kid answer a door at night while the other two firefighters are out running calls. You can't do it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we, we're, we're gonna, we have some more conversation to do about that, so.
Can I clarify real quick about the boat?
Pardon?
Just about the small boat, um, the thirteen-foot, whether we have cheap rent to buy that from Serb last several years.
That's what I thought. It wasn't, it wasn't.
His purpose was to go to the smaller.
Right, it's certainly not suitable for.
No, no, and we understand that. We understand.
But we had that small boat for that reason.
Right.
He came in with a reason. I've got these smaller lakes. And that made sense to us, cause you could hook on it with a pickup truck and go.
And before you did have a pontoon boat, I believe that had a, had a, had a, well, I heard stories about it, okay, so.
I just want clarification on the command car. Was not two years ago, uh, maybe more, that the town actually put forth onto the budget. It was voted on by the people to purchase a community vehicle and that was never purchased.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
No, I don't thi- I don't think so, Tom.
It was.
It couldn't, it must not have gone through the entire budget process, because if it went through the budget process, it would have, they would, it would have.
Would have been on the ballot.
You would have had.
It was on the ballot. Chief Erickson chose not to perform.
Yes, it's purchased.
What year was that?
What, what, what?
Hey, what he's just said?
Do you know what year?
Decided not to do it. That's what he just said.
Yes.
Tom, could I have the year on that, please, so I can pull up the ballot? Any chance? Rough, rough estimate, what year it was.
Yeah, I believe it was the first year that Chief Erickson.
So sixty, maybe?
Yeah. Yes, he chose not to.
We didn't say no to it.
It was on the ballot to buy, and it was coming out of the ambulance revenue account, and then.
But we didn't say no to it. What I'm telling you is, we didn't say no to it. You, the fire chief at that time said no to it. We, if it was on the ballot, who? Vote is regular, it's by us, it's done.
No, yeah.
They chose to do it.
If it was on the ballot and it was a positive vote, with offsetting revenue to come from the special revenue fund, it would have happened. That is just, that has never not happened.
I'll look that in the record.
I've, I've got it right here. I've got the ballot, so I'll, I'll pull it up.
Just look, because that's not.
Okay, but let, let Mike continue on. He's trying, he's trying to get his, go ahead.
Well, that, that's my bottom line point to vote. The vote is, understanding, like I, I ended my conversation with you last time. There will not be a vote on that lake. And I bring it to your attention that if, if this doesn't get funded, I, this is, you know, it's.
Why should we be, uh, in charge of taking care of all these other properties, Sammerton, Tilton, Laconia? Why should we jump on the boat and take care of these others? I mean, without a little donation from these other towns? Why don't you go to the other fire chief and say, would you donate to help us put a boat on that lake?
Well, I don't know that it would be a donation. What you would do is, it would be a mu- well, it would be a mutual agreement.
We shouldn't have to support the whole, whole lake, seeing as there's no boat on there. Why did we jump into it?
Did the town of Belmont pay the city of Laconia anything for the boat that's been sitting at that dock for the last few years?
No.
So why didn't the town of Belmont pay then? Why is it okay now but not then?
Well, when we had the fire station in Windisquam, Tilton paid for the repairs and, and whatever we needed down there. So I mean, why should we take the brunt of everything? I mean, two hundred thirty-five thousand dollar boat. I mean, throw that at the taxpayer and say, well, you gotta take care of Laconia, Sammerton, Tilton.
But they're also taking care of Belmont and their properties.
We, yeah, but there's more outstanding properties than there is Belmont.
So Sonny, my job is to tell you that, uh, mitigating emergencies in the town of Belmont, there is no boat here. I'm telling you how I'm going to try to fix it. If you're telling me this is not something we can afford, then that's the case.
Well, that's kinda what I'm telling. Well, that's kinda what I'm telling you. We, we can't, as far as I'm concerned.
Understand, you say afford, you're worried about taxpayers, correct?
This money is coming out of the special revenue fund, correct?
Where did the special revenue fund money come from?
Comes from insurance companies.
Mm-hmm. And it supports the ambulances?
It, it supports fire apparatus within the fire department, correct?
And it's an accruing fund. There's basically a savings account that was set up by former Chief Akkastrom many years ago and voted on by the town.
Correct.
I don't think at that time they ever, they ever expected the business that you do today. I mean, we didn't have a fire department as big as what you have today, or the people, or the equipment. So what I'm saying here is that when the voters see something like this, the negative side of it, whether the only people that won't be affected, that will go outrageous if someone's child drowned and they were in Belmont. And God knows they wouldn't want anybody to drown. But when they see a boat, they're gonna, they're gonna raise their arms and heads and think we're nuts. And that's the bottom line. And that's what I said to you. If, if you had just a consortium of the other guys, 'cause you've got the spot. You, you're, you're in the command chair if you got a boat on this lake. There's no doubt about it. They're, they're all gonna need you. At least Sammerton and Tilton are gonna need you. Maybe Laconia. The subject of Laconia's boat, they got a new one for, up there, and they took their boat out of service and brought it down here. Am I right?
No.
Then how do we end up with it?
This boat, if you remember correctly, we ended up putting a marine patrol boat at our station.
Yep.
And then it caused a federal accident and got returned. Chief, uh, Chief, um, Erickson found this boat in a marina, put it all together, and then put it on this lake. This bike, this was by no means new. It was used, and he put it on this lake so Belmont, the town of Belmont would have a boat on the lake to protect the community.
And there's supposed to be more down at, or dock down at the lake?
There's been the whole time there. The only time it comes out and goes to Laconia is with the winter, goes to winter ice at night. But actually, to be honest with you, that has never happened, because we usually get a rinse, winter ice through, there's some rain that go for us for nothing, and we park it beside the garage.
Yep.
So let me just ask a question, because I know, um, from some friends that, you know, boats are in short supply as far as, I guess, the mariners are selling themselves out, all right? And that's just scuttlebutt. When you're, when I'm looking, when you're looking at two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, is that a brand new boat?
That is a brand new boat.
Brand new boat, okay.
Boat that would be in service for years.
Okay, all right. And again, it's just a thought, all right? 'Cause I get myself in trouble when I think, I guess. What's the possibility of finding a used boat? And again, Wintisquam is big, all right, and I guess, I don't know how often you're gonna use the boat. Uh, nobody knows. I mean, that's the question, all right? But I guess, does it have to be a brand new boat? And I only say that, I mean, I understand why the mar- marine patrols probably buy a new boat, because they're out, they go from one lake to another, to another. They're out in them a lot, all right? We're not necessarily a marine patrol. Granted, there's going to be some training involved, so. You know, what am I, you know, I understand what I'm saying. I guess without.
But I would say that this is, all the years we usually buy equipment, you try to buy them, reason is, it has warranties, it's, it comes with training, it comes with everything we want to do this.
Yep.
Okay? I can use an example, and I'm sure it's gonna come back and bite me when I say this, but I would, uh, we bought a fantastic ninety-five foot ladder truck used.
Yep, yep, mhm.
So, I think that's an example why we're looking to buy them. Because it's something that will be, it comes with us already, it's warranted, and it's, it's, we won't have to worry about this as we take it in and out of water over the next thirty years.
Sure. I think as we had talked about the last time, and I'm not trying to get off the boat, I'm gonna talk about the special revenue fund, all right? Is, we talked about, as we all know, we've become, and this'll probably come back and bite me, I'll know in a couple days, um, that we've become more of a, um,
Ambulance.
Ambulance, or however you want to.
Most of our, sixty-six percent of our calls are ambulance service.
And we know that our ambulances, because we have two.
Correct.
One is newer, one is older. And we know unfortunately, with, due to the healthcare field, that it's had to make longer trips. You know, it's going to Concordmore, which puts it out of service, whatever. My worry is, as we talked about, was the fact that, we talked about how, when it's time to replace the older one, which, how long is that gonna take? You know, to get it here? What's the cost gonna be? I just don't want to get ourselves in a situation, okay, that we can't purchase or order a new ambulance using the special revenue funds. That will be very, um, very detrimental to this community. I mean, I understand the boat, all right? And I'm not trying to say that I don't know how many, I don't know how many residents we have on Wintisquam, and it's not always, we know a lot of people don't own property on Wintisquam, but are on Wintisquam with boats, all right? But I guess it's, um, and I can assume some of those people that are on the lake, those homes are closed up for the winter. I'm only assuming. I don't know what that percentage is, all right? But I think it's really, really important, it's, I worry about having the funds to support the ambulance, the next ambulance, and what may come forward. Um, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence with a boat, and I have been, only because unfortunately, I know it's a safety thing, and we are safety, all right? But then we have to answer to the taxpayers, and I understand that. The unfortunate thing is, is that the percentage of Belmont residents that are supporting, and even though it's not coming out of their tax dollars, well, it is in a roundabout way. There, most of your ambulance runs.
It's their money.
It's their money, right. And so we're trying to be, we're trying to keep a budget under control, but still be, provide the proper services for everybody. That's what we're up to.
My, smaller boat of that, so.
That's fine.
I agree with your.
Analogy, I'm trying to.
Of the amount of people.
Right.
At effect.
Yep.
We also play for a water system downtown that only affects a small amount of people.
You're exactly right.
So it's the same idea.
It is.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
My job is to elicit support from you guys to, for.
Yep, I understand that.
I, I play my case out in front of you.
Yep.
Um, and my concerns, and that's as much as I can do.
Can I ask you another question that really has nothing to do with capital? I'm just gonna change.
If, if we're, I'd like to see us finish off capital, Jean, or if that's something that we do it, I think that's, like, when we do that, 'cause that, we're almost done with this.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I, that's all I really have to add on to this.
Yep.
And that's what I was looking for.
Mm-hmm.
Then I can close this part out and make my statement, and I think will lead into another statement.
All right, all right. Um, I guess, as far as the utility truck, I have to go by what, John? I'm not a, I'm not a truck person, I'm sorry.
I'd like to do it next year. I've never said no. I've always tried to meet you a middle way, and I've never, when it comes to the fire department, I've always agreed. I'd just like to do it next year rather than this year. I'd like to see us keep that capital reserve, so when this new ambulance comes in, it's done. There's no question about money. I'm scared about money, Michael, that's all.
And, and I think, I think at this point, I think it would beho- you, behoove you to talk with Tilton, talk with Sammerton. Laconia's probably just gonna say, well, we got a boat and we can be there. All right, that would be my thought, and I don't know what they'll say. But I would definitely have those conversations with the local towns. I mean, we already, I mean, I hear you guys going to Canterbury. Um, and I, is Canterbury part of mutual aid here?
No, it's, it's a second compact or mutual aid to them.
Because it's like a different.
Compactor compact, and they're just mutual fire aid, obviously, in the mingle, 'cause we brought all the lines. We go to Loudon, you know, we go to Pittsfield, we go to Canterbury, so it's, it, it all comes together.
It all comes together, but I hear you going to Lacon- uh, to Canterbury. I mean, you know, it seems like a lot, okay? But, um, I guess, I mean, do we receive, where, where Canterbury is not part of that mutual aid, because it's a different county, I mean, I understand it's still aid, do we receive anything back from Canterbury for that?
We pay into our mutual aid system for that.
Right, right.
Pay into the Comptor Compact. We do receive five thousand dollars a year from the town of Canterbury as a, I don't know what, by the way, is, is something they've done for so many years.
Stipend or.
Stipend for us to be doing services.
Okay. And I guess my question to you might be, I think I'd kinda like to see that number. It'd be interesting to see, just for conversation piece, how many runs we make to Canterbury. Um, you know, we find out that that, that token, or however you wanna say that we get from Canterbury, when you look at the number of runs, is a little, um, you know, maybe not enough, okay? Just, I think that that's, I think that might be something, just to inquire, it's just for conversation piece. But I guess, I don't wanna say I don't support a boat, but I think it is important that you, you have a conversation with the local towns, because I just really think that there's gotta be a way. You know, it's unfortunate, times have changed, things have changed, and we don't know where this economy, we don't know where it's going. This, for us, or at least it is for me, a little unnerving when you're looking at these budgets, 'cause we just don't know. None of us know. It's a crapshoot at this point, all right? If that little bit of information would be awesome. Okay, continue on with your.
That's what I got for the C I D part.
All right. So my other question that I have?
So, what I'd like to do it this way, if I can, um, I'd like to clear up a few things.
All right.
You know, I was, I'm kinda looking to, social media has had a conversation over the last few weeks, and there's been some concerns within the community. I am going to sit here and tell you, our mission statement has not changed. We will respond to every emergency like we normally do. My point of the matter was, we may be delayed because of the way the calls come in and 'cause of staff. That is what I'm saying. We will, I don't care if Ruth Winnie doesn't agree with me, we're going to go to your house as much as you're out selling these, Jean going down one forty, or anybody else. That will never change.
That's a huge statement, because I've been, received a lot of, um.
We will not, that, and then, and that.
Let's just say, a lot of calls and then approached by people who are very concerned about that.
Professionalism of Belmont Fire Department has not changed, nor has any of this, this, no. Their, their calls will continue no matter what anybody's decision is. Good example is, it doesn't matter if you're the good guy or the bad guy, which still, no.
Awesome.
Back up a little bit on the Johns. Remember, we're talking, we're talking times. All of us talk about times have changed. In one of your, you know, statements, your, your daughter was on, and that was in, when I first started here, which was in nineteen ninety-six.
I just remember it because I remember going up and down the stairs.
But, no, nineteen ninety-six, we were doing a box up in the five hundreds for calls. That's what we were at. And then about two thousand one, we got so busy, we ran a thousand calls, the call company was unable to take the calls and make a keep up on them. Those calls were, were getting either sent to mutual aid, or they, they're so extremely delayed that, you know, it was causing problems. That's when the town decided to add a, additional personnel, and here we are today. Two thousand twenty-one, we're now went from a thousand in two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one, approaching the two thousand. That's probably some information that we should be out there saying, at that point, we're, we're at that point, the staff is getting hired. They're running a lot of calls and, and it's running them down. It's, it's, all healthcare is this rate, but this, people forget the EMS as well as the fire services as well. While approaching these calls, sixty percent, sixty-six percent of those, like we discussed, are, are medical calls. That relates to about thirteen hundred of our calls. Now, these numbers show could be thirteen, twenty, twenty-one.
Oh, sure, yeah, that's, yeah.
Out of those calls, forty percent of them at night, which comes to about six hundred and eighty of our calls, six hundred and eighty. Six hundred fifty, sixty-eight, right in there. And out of those, that's between seven P M. and seven A M. So those aren't night calls, okay? So that's forty percent of our calling. We have a, I'm not sure if it's unique to anybody else, but it seems to be, this back says, we have a a tendency to what's called fact of action, which means a call happens as soon as that call's cleared, or another call happens, another call happens, or simultaneous calls, one, two, three at a time. Um, and those calls are, are, are two hundred eleven at night, and I honestly don't know the numbers if I can give you the days by the phone. So those are the reasons, were some of the reasons why we, were the reasons I was looking to add on to additional personnel. You made a comment that struck me, and I had to do some thinking about it. You asked me about what can one person do? So I sat back down and thought about it. If you indulge me just for two seconds, here, I'll explain myself. Few years ago, it was a hot summer, just like you always have. Both ambulances were out. One was going to Concord Hospital, one was going to Laconia Hospital. There was a motor vehicle accident, they called in on phone six. They called in this back. There was only one person at the station. That station, that person decided to take an engine to the car. On arrival, they do a windshield, windshield size, confusing with the windshield to see what they have in front of them. At that time, they had two vehicles with a head on with, with a lot of damage. This person then got out of the vehicle, so went around, there was a captain there from the police department saying, hey, this is, this is your back, I don't know how that, this person is, and this people in the other car. That person now calls for extra ambulances, knowing his ambulances are out of town. And, and his one at the hospital will be hopefully coming as soon as he has a live, or a patient, hot, unloaded. Also requested help. In the meantime, that person then caught the first car to find the person, then started working on the other cars. By the time the first arriving ambulance got there, the highest status patient in that car was already being, the doors were already being pulled off that car as they came to take the person. And the second side of the vehicle was being taken care of. In the meantime, this person's still running the scene as all this kind of comes. One person, one additional person with the training and knowledge did all this. So when you ask what one person can do, that's what he can do. Police on the scene afterwards, it's like, that guy was like, whoa, that was unbelievable, nothing I've ever seen before. Cut the cars in seconds, just working on patients, so there's nothing I've ever seen. The only reason I know this person, because it was me. Twenty years of experience and a lot of time. The big question is, how do you get twenty years experience? Twenty years. We're talking about saying, you wanna get students informed and stuff like that, students, something like that. We're not starting at twenty years when this person walks into the door. That's people like us are treating, teaching that. We're talking about even higher level color, that's, experience takes time. We're looking to, like, people wanna come pump operators, or maybe come drive the truck. Again, with that, training still come involved, because you can't just drive a truck, go up in front of your house, and it's burning, and say, ah, ah. And that causes quite a little bit more of a problem. Now we teach them how to pump it. Now what happens when you fall out there, and nobody's really advanced the line into the house. An additional person there will be the second person, will be somebody like who's trained and who does it for sure. There's some confusions. Everybody that works at the Fire, Belmont Fire Department is professional. There are people that are career. That's their profession. Everybody does a profession. I do have some call staff that do work on places as their profession. But all in all, they're all professionals there. Unfortunately, when you start down this road in here, it, it, it does add on because of the amount of stuff that the road carries. Even just walking in the door, saying, ah, ah. Because the day a person that says, I can drive the ambulance, shows up somebody's house, and they run out and hands you a kit that's not breathing, will, will going to be perfect, everything. And if you don't think that's happened, it's happened a few times in my career. So that is my statement on that, just understanding, this is the reason one additional person can help. Now, I'm gonna tell you a couple more years, next year, whatever, you won't be looking for it? Or? No, I won't. I'm not gonna say I'm lying to anybody in this room. But like I said, between nineteen ninety-six and today, the world has changed. And that for a wrap. That's my statement.
Now I'm gonna ask you another question.
You ask me anymore.
Okay. Per diem?
Per diem.
I understand that that's becoming. I understand that that's becoming, um, uh, a lot of our surrounding communities are calling on and using per diem. That would be a, and correct me if I'm wrong, a fully qualified professional, um, that would cover, I'm thinking night, you know? And I'm thinking, and again, I don't know, and and, you know, you can you can look at statistics, whatever, but we, you probably have a better idea of nights that tend to be.
Per diem.
Go ahead.
Alton, Barnstead, Pittsfield, um, Loudon, Canterbury, a lot of these towns are using per diem. Per diem usually are either trained to your minimum standards or within has a standard that the chief has chosen to have them work. They're usually set to a set schedule. So if we're saying if we're going to cover seven days a week, twelve to twelve, that'll be a schedule that person comes from. A lot of those people come from other departments, they come because it's a set pay. Now, which they know they're not going to be, you know, if you go, not come in for any calls as a call guy and or come in for one for that month and you're not going to get, that's all you're going to get. So therefore, they are compensated for that time. So you, and I would assume weekly, uh, for that time. Um, I will say, I I was on the state website today and I did some looking around and, uh, for right now, there are a whole lot of pages. But, um, the statewide openings for full time, it was ten pages, and the statewide opening for per diem is eight pages. I think a lot of the times when people choose per diem, they're looking for their next step to go for add full time staffing on. It's it's the buffer to the next step. That would appear, that's what Alton has done. They're they're putting two people on a year for the next so many years until they get them to them. The only team is doing the same thing. So that is how that works. They would have a set pay and that would be, they would not require benefits. Um, but they still, remember, the person coming in still would have to be trained on our stuff.
Of course. So in other words, what would happen is, and and again, if, um, a per diem person would help to relieve, maybe, under certain circumstances, um, or obviously if a per diem is on, you know, and again, we never know, God forbid, we don't know when there's going to be a disaster, but you probably have certain nights that are, tend to be more busier. And I know that's, that's a guessing game.
Statistically proven, because we have to do math.
Yeah.
Our calls are same for every day of the week, there's various elements any different.
Yeah.
It's kind of odd that most departments are the same. Um, we have the same call volume Monday or Sunday night, it doesn't seem to change.
Change.
Um, where we're still saying the same.
Michael, on this per diem thing, which is absolutely new to me, with that, if these other departments, is it a way to look into to bring somebody in? Cost wise, for less money until you're satisfied with them, or they work out, or they fit?
Or the budget.
And you want to, and you want to come in, you're within a budget, and you want to convince, I want to bring these up to full time. Does that make sense?
We're getting, so we go down to the game mode and understand, first of all, they can't work full time. Okay, because.
I understand that, I got that.
Just hear me out. Because under the state retirement system and so forth and so on, you can't do that.
Right.
So it's not a way to get under the radar of full time staffing, it's a way of, it's just, so we can't have somebody say, there are departments that are have chosen to do that. The thing is, I don't think that I would like to get a, you know, a five hundred thousand dollar fine from somebody saying, hey, we did, we helped, we were, we did an appropriate.
So what you're saying is you would have a, a group of people, thank you, that's right.
I can say that still, the pool is a tough pool to come from again.
That's right.
We're all falling from the same pool, but the problem is the pool isn't as big. Everybody's trying to get per diem, full time, call, and the staffing out of there. Our calls, our call force, Lieutenant Cardy advises me, I have two people that I'm looking to put on. I will sit here and say, well, we'll put them on. I will sit here and.
But they're not qualified, though, when they go on.
Some of them, we had one who was a paramedic at one time, but I'm saying, as you put them on, we'll see. Because what happens is it's all in the numbers. You'll find that we right now have, I believe, ten call staff. One of them being a doctor. Well, he says, family lives here, and he's out being a doctor. Well, can't say no to that, I mean, that's so good for him.
Yeah.
You know, but we have others we haven't seen in months.
Sure.
Okay? And and some of them were because they didn't want to deal with COVID and still don't want to deal with COVID, I guess.
Yeah.
We have a paramedic that is phenomenal. I mean, the guy who works all day as a nurse and still comes in at night and 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 weekends, and I am sure his wife wants to murder him at times, but he's always doing that stuff.
Yeah.
You know, he's, that has worked out in our favor for that and those things. So again, if the thing is, we're not probably going to entice someone like that because we're not going to be able to pay the prices for somebody because the part time EMS people will be picked up by your part timer, by your privates, and the aspect of they're making so much money right now because they can't help people.
Yeah, yeah.
Zach?
Well, let me ask you this, is if we created a per diem line. And again, I I'm, I don't have.
How would you know how much to fund it?
Well, you don't, but, you know, it's no different than we we toy with the overtime line. We don't really know what that overtime. You don't know until it's over with, you're exactly right. I mean, I'm sure Mike can probably, um.
I mean, is it worth doing?
Yeah.
What's that, what's that?
Is it worth putting you through the jump, the jump rope group to do a per diem line?
I can give you the numbers, I don't know if you're going to get what you want. That's that's still the problem. I I think it's 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 out there. Obviously, departments are doing that.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not.
Would you look into that?
I can't look into that.
We've still got a budget committee to go to before we're not the end of this scenario, and we know that. But would you look into that? Because right now, that step.
Um, I think that. So we had tentatively, um, Mike was on for the very first budget committee meeting, which is November ninth. I'm sure Mike can get those numbers together before that time, but the board isn't scheduled to meet before that time.
I'm going to, that's one more straightforward question because now I've kind of, you still are against hiring a two additional personnel, correct?
Unfortunately. It's just the, it's not so much that we're against it, it's huge. I mean, we're, what was our, I don't have the fire. What was our increase, um, Gene, with the fire?
Yes, I know.
What was the increase?
If she wasn't.
Yeah, there, well, without, without those additional hires, the percentage was two percent. They went from one million seven, uh, I'm sorry, one million seven hundred fifty-three thousand budgeted in twenty twenty one to one million seven hundred ninety-six thousand budgeted in twenty twenty two without the additional staff.
I'll be perfectly honest with you, Mike. If you came to us and said, well, me, I can't speak for my colleagues. If you had come to us and said, you know, we we need personnel, and I'm not saying that you don't. If you had come to us and said, I'd like to hire, at least get one person on for this next budget season, because, you know, obviously, training, whatever, and trying to find that person and whatever. Um, I could, I can, I could accept that, all right? I can, and then, then the following year, and I understand it might, it might have to do with your, um, scheduling, all right, that you typically come with two at a time, all right?
Yep.
I just.
So I have a question.
All right.
Gene, when you did that number, would you, would you start date on those people?
Um, we had initially started them at April first.
April first, after March, yeah.
So why don't you start on that July first? If you're willing to look at, there are two additional people, a person in the next budget, you'd put them on on the sixth, and then the next year, you just continue paying.
Well, that would, if you put one person on this year, it's not only their pay that's going to hit. I'm looking at the second year. The money this year isn't exorbitant.
It isn't exorbitant.
Because you really, the most you look at it is eight months, okay? Depending on the hiring, how the hiring goes after town meeting, because you can't hire before. So you hire them, then probably with the hiring time, and if you, if they're experienced and they leave a job, or if you, even if it's a new person, you still got to have, you probably, as you just said, six months. The big expense comes the following year, and as in your budget that you proposed this year, you must have had, this must be quite a lump sum for two men for the equipment.
Now you're just stretching it out, you know, by hiring one?
My, my point to that, although, is you sit there, it's a large sum coming up, right? You already paid it. So your next year's isn't any higher because you've already got that in a budget. So only go on a budget above what you already put in.
Yeah, but it still increases the total amount of money, Mike.
Correct. At the next year.
Kick the can down the road.
But that's what we're doing with employees, though. It it it's a staff, it is, is, I guess I can't pre-arrive that enough. The staff is 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 getting beat down. And and at one point, at one point, we just say that's that's not good.
Why don't we do this one? I'm not trying to shut you off, listen to what you've got to say. We're going to be here for a little while longer today, I guess. Let's the three of us talk about it. You made your point, you're, I understand what you're saying. And you help, your people that support you here, and I understand that, and thank you for coming.
And I would like to just offer a comment to Lieutenant Murphy. In two thousand sixteen, they did raise and appropriate forty thousand dollars for a command vehicle to come from the special revenue fund, and they did not expend it. I am going to look into that from a, um, just, just from the perspective of, does that, did that appropriation go away at the end of two thousand sixteen? Because it had been made from the special revenue fund. I'm curious if those funds are out there, exactly, more or less as an encumbered amount towards, um, some. So I'll, I'll look into that and get back to you.
Murph, that wasn't us. We didn't take it out.
No, no, I didn't say that. I always say that if money was appropriately.
That money may roll in anywhere else, it's still fine.
No, it's, it's, it didn't, it didn't lapse to the general fund because it was, it had an offsetting revenue. So those monies never left the special revenue fund.
Right. And obviously, obviously, forty thousand in, what was it, two thousand?
Two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, and now it's seven, it's now double, right?
So technically, shouldn't the chief of fire department, if that money was voted to on by the tax base to fund that revenue account, and it was never used and purchased, shouldn't he be able to go right now and buy a vehicle for forty thousand dollars?
That I have to confirm because what happens typically, um, Tom, is at at year end, we create what's called an encumbrance list, and any appropriation that wasn't expended in that year is encumbered into the, into the next year. This is a special type of warrant article, and I need to find out if it was in, if if by the nature of its type of warrant article, it is encumbered forward. So I will get the.
And I guess my other comment will be forty thousand dollars now.
But that was for, was for an S U V, small, not for.
Not for a, not for a.
Not for a backup truck.
Yeah.
But still, if it's your money, and you're entitled to it, I mean, we didn't stop it.
I'd like to clear time and consideration.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I speak to one more comment, please? Uh, again, I'm here to support these guys.
Yeah.
I work full Leconia Fire full time, that's, that's my job, full disclosure. We're having a tremendous issue hiring and retaining people as well. The fire department is having the same. It's, that's why we're here.
We have a full boat, don't we?
How many people, how how many hires have you had in the last two years?
Uh, we've had, oh, I have another side.
Well, it doesn't matter, Mike, we haven't had an issue hiring. I I mean, we're fortunate, we haven't had an issue.
My concern as a taxpayer is, is why are we in that position where we're needing to fill positions? Majority of the hires that they've made in the last few years haven't been retirements. They've been going to other communities. So as, so as we're looking at budget issues, contract negotiations, whatever it may be, as a town, we need to make sure that we're doing what we can to retain the people that we have, to train these college students, to train these call guys. Belmont has a phenomenal reputation. I've seen them do great work with two guys. But we need to keep the guys that they have, guys and gals that they have, to make sure that that happens. So going forward, if you guys could please look at that as well.
Well, and to get to.
I would ask the fire chief to say, Jason, they're, they have been, at the last multiple meetings, they have been committed to the fact that they want to retain and keep retention of their people. And Ruth has mentioned that negotiations will be coming up, and they know that.
Spring, I think.
That they will be doing something at that point as well.
In May.
Thank you.
It is important that we retain not only fire, police, public works, everyone, because we all know that everyone is burnt out, all right? And I, and I'm not making, don't, I'm not putting the fire department, everyone is burnt out. I don't think it matters what, what business you're in lately, there just isn't enough people, enough qualified train. And we see that with the hospitals. We see that calling our doctors. Everyone is in the same boat, and I understand, I'm not downgrading, don't think I'm downgrading, I'm not. It's just, I, everybody's burnt out. Go ahead, Tom.
And just, and the chief spoke that the calls are going up from two thousand one, uh, two thousand, the month of two thousand twenty one.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And we've added one additional person in that time period, in a twenty year period.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
And how many police officers have that been? Uh, Stephen, do you know how much your staff has increased in that twenty year period?
I don't know if the, have we, we haven't added anyone, nothing. And their calls have increased tenfold, obviously. Yeah. It's a lot. But again, Tom, you also have to look at the other end, is that when everyone gets their tax bills, I mean, I understand, but, yeah.
I I understand, you have to be fully responsible for the tax.
Yeah, and believe me.
I'm looking for the support of the base, of the, of tax base and residents of Belmont.
Unfortunately, no matter what happens with the tax bill, we get, we get nailed, even though we're not responsible for all of it, obviously, because we have a school, but we get nailed. Go ahead.
And this might be a perfect opportunity to have this conversation. So, um, in reviewing the Department of Revenue Administration portal this morning, the school budget has been apportioned for this coming year. We've not set our tax rate at the town level yet, but the school budget has been apportioned, and I'm able to take that amount and divide it by what the town's current assessed value is and come up with what is anticipated to be an estimated tax rate for the school, the local school portion. It is estimated, based on those numbers, to increase by a dollar twenty-eight per thousand. We are looking to go from thirteen seventy presently to fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents at the local level for the, for the school tax.
And what did it go up last year?
Um, last year, it actually went down a small amount. It went from like thirteen eighty-five to thirteen seventy. Um, but it is estimated, um, based on their, um, the apportionment of the piece that Belmont pays versus the piece that Canterbury pays, divided by the town's total assessment, it's looking like it's going to go up a dollar twenty-eight.
And no matter how much we talk about it, people will come up to us and say, what are you going to do about it? We have no control over the school at all, but it is amazing. All right.
You don't, and the county hasn't formulated a budget at all.
I, they, they have, they've submitted their paperwork for, um, apportionment. I did confirm that with Debbie Shaket this morning, so we should have that expected number. In fairness, just, their tax rate previously was a dollar twenty-eight per thousand. I I think you're right, I expect it will probably go up some, but in comparison, it's it's substantially less than the effect of the school district. The town's anticipated increase is twenty cents, and that was less than we had predicted. Um, during the town meeting process last year, we had, we had anticipated it was going to go up thirty cents, and that was directly related to the bond for the new police station. But based on increased revenues that we've received, we're looking at about a twenty cent increase. So it is less, far less than what, well, not far less, but less than what we had expected.
I remember, Gene, I don't know if you could answer it to me in a while, because it's off the cuff. How much would the impact of the two fire departments be in taxes, do you know? Is that something that's top your role? Not to do right now, I.
Yeah, you know what I did, what, I had, you don't have your budget worksheet with you by any chance, do you, from previously? I had a dollar amount down in the lower right hand corner of what the total impact was that would be. I think it was a hundred and fourteen thousand and change.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
Was it?
All right. All right, Ruth, can you tell me that amount?
The total amount?
Just that amount in the lower right-hand corner, hundred and fourteen, um, one, where am I?
A hundred and forty-five, twenty-seven, twelve, five twenty-seven.
Forty. Hold on here. Um, it's fifteen cents per thousand. For, and again, that was based on a budget that was estimated to start on April first, so it was not a full year's budget.
Okay. It's not easy. All right, all right, any other, anything else, guys? Sorry, but we have to do a non-public. Your next order of business, thank you.
I just, we've never, ever had that happen, so it was definitely.
It was when he was new.
Are you going to leave me out if I have a lot of time?
Well, I am going to find out if, because of the way that warrant article was written, if it somehow, typically, warrant articles are designated as special or non-lapsing because of their designation, so I need to find out what that is. So we may, and typically, they, when they're designated that way, it's non-lapsing for a period of five years, which would mean potentially that we would be in that year. So let me get the answer to that.
Because the only problem with that thing is.
It's not enough money, unfortunately, the forty isn't enough to probably pay for it, but.
We need you guys to take that, I remember it was, it was Ken's decision, because we have one chief here, we don't need to make two commanders.
Right, and the other issue is, is that has such a, however it was written before all of our time, we have to legally. Huh, you were here?
It's not a special revenue, yeah, that's, that's a whole thing in itself.
Yeah, in itself.
Thanks, guys.
I'm back on our own business again this year, of which I guess I should probably give up my chair on the plank, because I cannot believe that I sat the other night, for almost as long as we sit here now, and listen to Sharon Champion propose sixty thousand dollars. Can this be in a closed session?
Oh, oh, hold on, please. We need to make that happen, I'm, got waylaid there. Let me, I have to shut the other camera off too, so hold on, please.
I apologize.
It's okay, that's not, it's not like the first thing you had to worry about, is it? So, what do you think on this fight? We've got to make the decision, I guess, on the next day or so, so.
What's that?
The fire department.